This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We'll open tonight's meeting for August 6th at the Southampton Planning Board. And all members of present tonight, Paul Fergal, Mark Donald, Jim Labrie and myself, Paul Demon. So first order of business tonight, A and R that Thomas Hankins submitted for 13 to 50 Cold Spring Road. I sent that information to you and now that Paul's on, who is a little bit more adept in this than I am. Can Paul, any way you can bring up that plan because the last time I did it, I screwed it up.
Uh, let me try to get it up.
Cause every time I share the screen, I can see it and nobody else can.
Paul, is that the Neil and Gloria Allen one?
No, no, this is A and R for Cold Spring Road. Hankins is the name. That would have been sent before that Cook Road one.
Maple Street, yeah.
Maple Street? Hold on.
No, the Hankins one is the A and R. The Maple Street one is a discussion we're going to have. That was the last one I sent. Then Hankins one had to be over a week ago, Paul.
Hold on a second. Which means I don't appear to have that in my, oh, hold on. I, I don't appear to have that in my, in my inbox. It would have come from the Southampton or the planning board at Southampton or TonoSouthampton.org, correct? Paul, do you have that email? Do you mind sending it to me? Maybe I could just pull it up.
I've got it up on mine. Now I've got to figure out how I can share it. Let me just.
So in the bottom center of your Zoom, it says share?
Yep.
And then select where it's up. Select, you can see one of those windows. There you go.
Did anybody see, everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
You did it.
What?
He did it.
Time for celebration.
Let's hold a meeting here. Okay. So here it is, and it's pretty straightforward. Um, the applicant, Thomas Hankins at 13 Cold Spring Road. The plan was surveyed and everything else. What he's doing is just buying that extra lot next to him. He's not going to build on it because as you can see, and probably by his email that I sent you too, there's a Bruno pool there. And he's just increasing his acreage to enjoy the conservation land that he's on. But he has no intention, which he probably would have very little chance to build anything on it anyway, given the conservation restrictions. So, um, any other questions you guys feel free to ask? Any comments?
The frontage is plenty. I can't quite read the small writing.
Let me see if I can.
Looks like, oh geez, it's moving.
One, 14443 is the new lot and the existing is, uh, 12994 plus some extra.
So is he combining these together?
Correct.
Oh, that's a good thing. Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it.
Mark, Paul?
What's the homeowner's, I'm sorry.
What's the name?
What's the homeowner's name again?
Thomas Hankins, H A N K I N S.
Which means I don't, I, I, I was trying to zoom into the plan. I have your email, but it doesn't have that attachment on there from nine days ago. Um.
You're seeing it on, you're seeing it on the screen there. Okay.
Yeah. So you're basically adjoining, uh, lot 91.
Lot X with the other one, right?
With lot 90A. As called out, um. So basically it's just going to be under common ownership. So they're not. Was that lot already pre? Oh, so they're carving that out. That's why we're here for the A and R. Okay. I, I don't have any questions. Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Mark?
I agree.
Okay. That being said, uh, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark and seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, great. Now let's see if I can close out of this and get back to the other business here. Oh geez, there we go. Oh, okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a building permit, and this is kind of a formality because and I don't know if Jim was on the board then. I don't think so, but Paul was in Mark and Dan, but it's for one Cook Road, Mark Dar, um, Mark Gerard, who we had already previously had a, um, decision on a ground mount solar because it fell under the old regulations. Uh, so we, we approved his ground mount solar installation and now he's applying, uh, they're getting ready to construct it and they're applying for the building per, permit at one Cook Road. So, um, any other concerns about that?
What size is it?
What's that? The, uh?
The solar, the solar farm or whatever he's building?
It was, it was under, it was just under the, it was just over the minimum for a small ground mount in our regs, current regs. What is that? 10 KW Paul? Do you recall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just over. It was like 11 something. And that's what triggered, uh, but again, since town meeting had approved the, uh, the new regulations, uh, for having those by right, it was a pretty easy process. There was, there was not a lot of disturbance of land or no stormwater management, um, required on it. So we did issue him a decision to approve that.
Yep. Sounds reasonable.
Any other discussion on that?
I'm good.
Mark?
I'm okay.
Paul?
Okay with that.
Okay. Uh, could I have a motion then to approve the building permit for one Cook Road?
So moved.
Second. Jim, second. Who is that? Paul?
Yes.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Paul. All in favor? Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Next item of business is the fiscal 26 contract for Richard Harris, I believe. Again, I sent you guys that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Now we had to adjust that because I had to check with Bradley Osk and the town accountant. You know, 10 years ago or so, Jim, or whatever, we were pretty, we were pretty flush with our account. I think we had over 15,000 in the revolving account. Um, due to subdivisions and et cetera, and that is slowly eroded because we haven't had that kind of development. And, um, most of this, um, what we had was all, um, expended on consultant fees with either Larry Smith or now Richard Harris. So I got, I got like $3,000 left. Um, I requested in the budget this year, 5,000, knowing that I needed some buffer for Richard's consulting. If we were going to continue with, uh, bylaw revisions and any other kind of consulting we needed. I got $500. So.
They lost a zero on you.
He had to, uh, resubmit his contract because it was, I think maybe in previous years, we had, uh, allowed it up to like $10,000, not to expend over that, but certainly I told him, I said, I think you better cut it back to 2,500 because I want some money there in case we do have something I gotta pay for. I want a few bucks left so he doesn't chew it all up. So, uh, his contract is reading, uh, not to exceed $3,000.
2,500, I thought.
Yeah. And it won't exceed 3,000 certainly because I.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't have it. I don't want to spend that much. So looking and furthermore, just to give you a little background, knowing that the town is going to at some point advertise for a quasi uh, planning board, conservation agent, housing authority, zoning board person. Um, that hasn't been advertised yet. He sent Scott a job description before the end of the last fiscal year. And, um, he also put in there, he was willing to, um, consult with this new person going forward. Um, if, if the town, um, so desired, um. Scott didn't have a problem with that, but again, um, if, if it goes forward after, uh, in the process of hiring somebody, it's not going to come out of my till because I don't have it. But anyway, um, in the most important things that he's working on right now, because we've done a lot of revisions in the last few years. He, um, prior to the June 30th invoice that he submitted, um, last month, he had, uh, done some, um, work on our policies and procedures, which, uh, needed some brushing up on. And he did quite a bit of work on it, in fact. Um, so it's got a good head start. So I'm thinking we can't really do too much more until we get that, um, behind us because I, I don't know how much more money we're going to have to expend going forward on any other revisions, um, for this year. So I'll entertain a motion if, uh, this board will accept his contract for $2,500, um, for the fiscal year 26.
Like to make a motion to accept, um, Richard Harris's contract for not to exceed $2,500, um, for this fiscal year.
Second.
Motion made by Paul, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Jim's aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Next is the, uh, I sent you a copy of the, I hope I did. I'm pretty sure I did. Open space and recreation plan overview. It has to be updated every so many years, I guess. Um, I kind of read through it. I didn't read it verbatim, but, um, it's kind of.
Intense.
Yeah, there's a lot in it. I, I was not happy having to deal with it so many years ago and now it's back in our lap. Not that we have to go through it all. It's just that most of the, uh, stuff that's in there, there's a good percentage of it, maybe 50% of it is all planning board related. If something ever comes to the table and I don't know who's going to propose it, but what's your, uh, what's your, uh, feeling on that document and, um, let it go forward as it's written, or do you want to make any kind of, uh, edits to it for open space? Feel free to chime in.
Uh, I just had one question. Uh, I don't remember what it was exactly, but about asking us to, um, change the zoning to, um, enhance affordable housing. I thought that was, uh, one of the things they wanted us to do was to modify the zoning. And I wasn't sure. Uh, I modified the, uh, the zoning for multi, multifamily, I guess. And with the new, uh, regulation by the state, you know, gave us this with the, um, the secondary homes. Um, I've got the.
The AD, what the ADU?
ADUs. I didn't know if that was something that, uh, we were in the process of doing. I remember us, we were talking about modifying the zoning for that purpose.
Well, the ADUs were, um, that was passed in that package back in May, Mark.
Right.
Um.
That's what I'm saying. That's sort of been, that's sort of been done. That's why I was wondering why it was asking us to do some additional stuff.
Okay. So that was 2025. In the year before that, we changed the zoning to allow multifamily in, in most districts. Et cetera. So I'll, I'll check into that.
I don't remember exactly. It was a lot of reading.
Yeah, right. Jim, I think you were on the board when that thing came through originally, when we did it, right?
Uh, I may have, but I do not recall it for some reason, but, um, but I, I know the only thing we did to try to get affordable housing is exclusionary zoning, which netted zero. We never got one affordable house from it, all that work we did. So, um, yeah, that maybe ought to be piggyback. That should be modified. If we're going to make changes for affordable housing and we do something else, we should take, we should relook at the exclusionary zoning because like I said, it never, we never got one house out of it. Maybe we make some changes there.
Right.
As well. I mean, you might want to combine that with that, but, um, but yeah, I don't quite remember it, but, uh, I started going through it. I did not finish going through it. Is this something that we have to answer now or do we have, can we wait till the next meeting before we can, I can get?
I think he's, he's got to know, like, forget what the email said. It said something like he's got to know by September 25th. Maybe we have another meeting, um, the first meeting in, or second meeting in September to get that back to them before they send it off. They just wanted our input if there was something there.
Yeah, we could just go to the next meeting and then finalize it. I'd like to get through it. I didn't finish it. Um, but, uh, that would be great if we could.
All right. Then Paul, before I ask for tabling this, and did you have any concerns or any questions on that or comments yourself?
I, I just wanted to make sure that when we do look at this closely, that we, we take a look at potential conflicts in the goals and objectives that are listed here.
Conflicts with?
Well.
Master plan or?
Yeah, within the document itself, you know, there are sections where we're trying to protect town natural lands and rural community character. Yet we want more housing, right? So it's like, which one do we want?
Yeah, double edged sword, right?
Yeah, it's like, obviously I didn't read the, every single detail under those particular goals, but that's something that needs to be reviewed. So it doesn't tell us that like we're speaking.
Well, that's probably a good one. It, um, given what Mark and, uh, Jim said, it's probably a good one to focus on that, that, that section about housing. So we can maybe add some clarity to it.
Absolutely. I, I, I think that's something to keep in mind, given that. And I'm not providing any opinion with the following statement, but we have two different schools of thought in town where we, we have one group that's very focused on trying to expand our residential potential, yet there's the other one that's trying to preserve the rural nature of the community. Obviously that could be done with zoning and, and, and trying to leverage different areas to make those two goals concurrent. However, that's something we just want to make sure we're not conflicting with its, um, statement.
Yeah. All right. Given that, so somebody want to make a motion, then we'll table it for further review and I'm, I'm reasonably sure we'll meet the first, um, Wednesday in September. And if for some reason or other, there's no agenda and he doesn't need that until like the 25th of September, I'll, I'll put it off until that second meeting, but for all intents and purposes, I'll, I'll schedule it for the next one, provided we have any other agenda. Somebody want to make a motion to table for further review?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark. Seconded by Jim. All in favor, Mark? Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Myself for motion made to table. All right. And lastly, I sent you, uh, communication from the assessor's office for your review and your, uh, maybe chuckling, I don't know, but I, I got it yesterday and I, she was, um, Kathleen from the assessor's office was asking me to assign an address and I'm saying, I don't remember this. Like, how can I assign it? She's, well, I've got a bill of sale here and a, and a deed that was filed with the lawyer's signature and the stamp from the registry on a parcel that was, um, sold on Maple Street. And I went through all my records for the last nine months to a year, and I found no A and R for that. And I'm saying, well, how the hell can this happen? So am I all wet, uh, Mark, Jim, Paul, or can, can you, can you sell a piece of property without surveying it and doing an A and R? And also, uh, you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, did it not make one of those lots non-conforming?
Well, I, I went through it and first of all, I don't understand how the registry of deeds can take a, a, a plan that has not been endorsed by a planning board. I don't understand how that can happen, number one. And number two, there's a lot of buildings. I looked, I looked in pretty detail. There's a lot of buildings in that parcel and their line goes in between. So are they taking a primary residence and having secondary? I don't know. The deed, you know, because it's not a formal application. So we don't have all the data. And then the other thing is even if they were to create another lot, I think they're in 175 foot. It's residential rural area. And there's not enough frontage there for two lots. So I don't think we could have endorsed it anyway. So that's just a couple of things that I looked into quickly.
Exactly. Well, thank you. Mark, your comments?
No, I've, um, I mean, I know about selling it. I think, uh, you, you know, a bank wouldn't let you do it unless you had, uh, I think a planning board endorsement. And I was also noticing on the plans, they weren't stamped. I mean, they were, were not stamped by a, a PE as well. They were, they were noted by a PE, but it wasn't stamped and signed. I don't know if that makes a difference as well. I was surprised that a registry took them.
Yeah. Paul, any comment?
I, I share the same concerns.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, I talked to Kathleen today. She was going to, um, contact. I just told her to wait. She'll call tomorrow, but, but I said, you've got to contact the, um, property owners there and tell them there's a process to go to, but I, I'm really, really surprised that a, an attorney that they hired, and I'm not going to mention the name, they, they signed it and the registry stamped it. I have no idea what's going on and.
Do we have a copy of this or is this something that we can research to see what, what, what specific details there are?
I thought, and I hope in my email, and if not, I'll re, resend it. I thought in my email, I sent you guys the entire attachment.
I got, I got the entire package. I got the plan and the, you know, the.
It showed deeds and everything else, right?
Yes. So I don't know. Is this something that has to go to legal? Uh, because somebody should contact the registry and find out, are we missing? Is there a new regulation that we're not aware of? Or did they make an error on their part? And where do we go from here? Because, uh, that you can't let this continue with, you know, this, if we don't do anything and it happens again and again, I don't know. I mean.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. I think, isn't that the significance of the Mylar that's signed by the planning board and sent over to be filed at the registry? How can they, how can they do it without a, a surveyed Mylar?
Yeah, exactly. They're supposed to also check the day. I know this with my problem I had in the past, uh, went to record a plan and you have six months from the time we endorse it to the time you have to record it. And, uh, I missed it by a week and they actually took the endorsement, but then it got canceled. So, uh, they actually recorded it. Remember that? Uh, that was a, a long, long time ago, but, um, but yeah, I, I don't understand, um, how, like I said, how they could take that unless the rules have changed and we don't know. But we should definitely have a conversation, I think with the registry, just to know if it's something that we're missing or is it something that they made a mistake on?
Well, in, 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 um, sympathetic with the assessors, you know, here she's, they, she was presented with this paperwork and saying, well, so now I gotta make out a, a new tax bill and, and, you know, draw up new maps or what the hell am I going by? You know, what have I got here to go by? Other than some lines drawn and a dotted line drawn on a map by somebody.
Oh, there's nothing because we would need the form, you know, the, uh, all the proper data to come before us so we can make a decision. Um, so until they do that.
Also, did you, you noticed Jim, um, doesn't mean a lot to me, but you've been around here, um, all your life that isn't there a, what's that mountain road that was on? Isn't there a?
Little Mountain.
Yeah, Little Mountain Road. It says discontinued on it. Uh, that's another thing that when we have a surveyor that gives us a map and it's stamped and all that other neat stuff, we know it's correct, but just because somebody wrote it on it, we don't know if that's correct at this point, but it probably is, but we don't know for sure. We need a stamp. Somebody put a stamp on a plan saying, yes, this is it. And then we can hang our hat on that, I guess, but.
Okay. Well, thank you for your input and I'll relay that to Kathleen and I guess we'll see this down the road, maybe.
Yeah, this might have to go to the select board. I don't know if they should act on this because it's something that was done. I, I don't know. I don't know where it should go from here, but, uh, somebody should definitely, um, involved. I don't know. It's true. It's never saw it before.
Yes, yes, Paul.
Not to raise further concerns. There's two exhibits, exhibit A and exhibit B that identify the, uh, the meets and bounds of the parcels in, 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 in question. Someone prepared that. So that would not have been, my understanding is you need to prepare those prior to submitting to the registry of deeds.
Yeah. According, according to the assessor, that, that plan was old. There was nothing new on it at all.
Right. But if you look at the exhibit A, exhibit B, everything is dated from the late seventies, 1978.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Right. But then if you look at exhibit A, exhibit B, it looks like it's fresh. Looks like someone took it out of their word file from modern times and printed it from a word file because it's got a path in the bottom of it that uh, conveys that it's, it's not, you know, something written by a typewriter that would have been done in the 1970s.
Huh. Interesting. I, I wouldn't have picked up on that.
I, I've been watching a lot of detective shows.
That's funny.
Um, but, uh, but on a serious matter, it looks like that they tried to uh, skid the, the process by, by submitting something that doesn't seem to be proper. Unless we're all missing it, they might've submitted it and it's not there and it was done legally. But then again, we didn't sign off on it. So we don't have record of it.
Well, you're, you're right.
There's not enough frontage for two lots. So we could never have proved it as far as what I can see.
Right.
Digging into it from what I did.
That's, that was my first impression when I did the math on the frontage and I'm saying this is, this is wrong in a couple of different ways. So.
Yeah. And then like I said earlier, there's a lot of structures on there. And if you separate primary from secondary structures, which we got in trouble, uh, remember Richie Alex said got us pretty, we did that on Strong Road. We actually separated a lot. We did an A and R from a primary to a secondary structure and he gave us a lot. From a primary to a secondary structure, and he gave us a lot of grief on that.
So, do we start with the Board of Assessors? Because frankly, this is, this is in their category two. I don't know if this needs to be escalated to a legal review, since it's clearly. Something that's. Omitted our review.
Well, I'm assuming she's, when she talks to the uh, the owners or the sellers of that property, that she's gonna put them on notice and. Um, I'm gonna tell her she, they should probably seek um legal advice on it, especially the the. The counselor that signed off on it, the the deed and everything, so. Maybe, maybe he was unaware there wasn't a plan. I'm not sure, but um.
Well. What was I just gonna say? Uh, shoot. Yeah, um, from what I saw in the paperwork you sent me, it was told for a dollar, so it it went to a family member is what it looks like. So, uh, the only way out of this is if. The family member owns an adjacent property, they can do something like that, and then they'd have more frontage, but. Uh, from what I see, though, I don't, I don't think an A and R will fly, but.
Right. Thanks for your input. I'll call Kathleen and talk to her in the morning. Has anybody got any other um information committee reports or anything else you'd like to share before I call for adjournment?
I have one thing to bring to the town's attention, and maybe this is something that. We 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 bring up to the, to the town administrator side, but um. So Mast D O T ha- is in the process of establishing a uh municipal planning and support. Uh, program that they're providing high level planning and. Conceptual level engineering services to municipalities across the state. So this is a new program that's being rolled out, is my understanding, um, that they have. So where I'm going with this is, it seems like they're taking a lot more hands-on. Hands-on approach at locations that municipalities might have concerns about. Which can be either state, state-owned roadways, which obviously Route Ten is the entire corridor is owned by the state. But then also locations that might not be under a state jurisdiction as well. What would be ideal is i- if if we can start. You know, maybe looking at locations with. Uh, the town administrator to see if there's some support we can get. On assistance to study and provide potential mitigation measures or um. You know, ar- areas where there's, you know, safety concerns or a need to do a sidewalk evaluation or shared use path evaluation on Route Ten. Or other things of that matter. It doesn't have to be on state roads, is my understanding, but the point is, this is something that we can leverage state dollars to help us. Bring more of a standard into Southampton.
Um, probably Randall should be on board with that, too. Highway, you know?
I would, I would imagine, yeah, I think that's a good suggestions, yeah.
You have any, do you have anything uh in uh that you could send me?
I'll email it to you right now.
So I can forward to uh Scott and Randall?
I'll send it to you right now.
Good, thanks, Paul.
I'll send you like.
Yep. While he's doing that, Mark, any committee reports from you? Mark?
I'm sorry, what?
Any committee reports on your end?
No, no.
Okay, Jim?
Nope.
All set, Paul?
I sent it off, and we're good. Yeah, I sent that off to you. Um, feel free to share that with others in in town. I'm not sure if that's being advertised, but that's something we know is coming. On a consultant side, so that's something that the town should consider to potentially get.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for adjournment. Motion?
I move that way adjourned.
Motion by Mark, I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Paul got it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Alright, thanks, gentlemen, uh, for. Good to see everybody and uh enjoy the next few weeks of August, and um I'll keep you posted on that meeting in September.